Alrighty, the time is now 6:05 and I would like to call to order tonight's special Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Roll call please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Demmett.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Plaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Exum.
Here.
And President Hall.
Here. Great, before I get started on the citizen statements, and we did receive a few today, I just wanted to let the public know, because I think there was some confusion about tonight's meeting. Tonight's meeting is a special board meeting that we called about a month ago to discuss the building plans for the Thomas Paine Elementary School. Refurbishing, rehabbing, sorry. It's not a regularly scheduled board meeting, as some people in the community may have thought. So I'm gonna read these public comments and I want you all to know that there will be a greater discussion of school opening in August at our August 4th study session. So please stay tuned for that, we're not avoiding the issue, it's just that this was a meeting that we scheduled before we had the guidelines that came about over the summer with reopening schools. So with that in mind, I'll start with my first comment. I received one from Dr. Brian Riley, who writes, "I've seen the recent recommendations of two days of school a week for the fall. I'm writing to say that I hate this idea. While I understand the concerns related to coronavirus, it's not tenable to leave kids at home three days a week. How are parents supposed to work? How many families have the ability to work from home? Not to mention the quality of education at home and lack of socialization. I suggest you poll the families of each school to see who have the ability or want to keep their kids at home, which is probably many, to see how many kids would actually be attending school. With that information, you would then know the density of students in each school to see if distancing with masks is possible. If so, then have schools open with masks, cleaning, etc., and deal with the at-home kids as needed. On top of all that, the best evidence from schools elsewhere suggests almost no transmission within schools related to kids. Signed, Dr. Brian Riley." Next up from Yuli Barishnikov. One, "It is completely unacceptable in the time when transparency and trust are of utter importance to hide the board meeting from public view. The website says that there are no meetings in July, Facebook page does not mention it either. Two, are there plans for the volunteers to help with the extracurricular programs using online tools? I would like to offer math enrichment program for after-school participants. Are there mechanisms to implement this? Best, Yuli Barishnikov, Urbana." Next one comes from Mary Liskowski, also Urbana. "Hi all, I wanted to write to express my hope that the Urbana School District will offer a remote learning option for this fall. I would guess that ours is only one of many households that have a high-risk family member that makes the prospect of sending our children into the school a perilous one. In addition, I think the national and state battle with the coronavirus is far from over, and that it would be far less disruptive to start with remote learning rather than start in person and have to make another switch to remote learning if the situation deteriorates." Thank you, Mary Liskowski. From Gabriel Nardi. "Dear Urbana School Board, is USD-116 pursuing joining with the University of Illinois to have COVID-19 testing capacity and to trace contacts? My understanding is that the app used by the U of I is open to the public. What is USD-116's COVID testing capability? Will staff and students be tested onsite? Thanks, Gabriel Nardi, USD-116 dual-language teacher, grade three, Lille School, and parent of two USD-116 students." From Patricia Jones. "I am a proud USD-116 parent. My child will be a sophomore. I strongly support an all-remote option for the next two years. I'm confident that an all-remote solution is best for safety and health of all staff and students. Go Tigers." Thank you. Patricia Jones on Vermont Avenue in Urbana. And finally, this is just received from Amy Byram with the note, "Will parents be able to choose a totally online option for the fall without having to withdraw their students from school?" And that concludes all of our public comments for this evening, citizen statements, excuse me. There is no call for, next on the agenda, there's no call for an executive session after tonight's current meeting, so I would like to have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
All moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Member Carter. Need to unmute Brenda.
I'm trying to unmute, it's not, there we go.
Yes.
Okay, and Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Hall?
Yes, thank you. Agenda is approved. We have one action item tonight, the only other thing requiring a vote, and that is the approval of the administrative personnel items. We have just a few for the summer. Nothing out of the ordinary, I don't think. So does anybody have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Approved and seconded, roll call please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, motion passes. Right, on to 7.0 on our agenda, which is our, tonight's study topic. The Thomas Paine concept options that, based on the previously discussed requirements for the project, Riley Glarum of IGW Architecture is with us to present preliminary concept building and site development options up for discussion. I'll let you take it away, Riley.
Hey, thank you very much. Good to see everybody Tuesday evening, a special Tuesday evening. I'm gonna do my usual technical full pause, probably trying to get my screen to show. Let me know if it succeeded. Everybody, alright. I wanna try to get everybody up on my screen so we can talk to you. Okay. I think everybody is there. So tonight is the next step in the concept programming and concept planning phase. And tonight, I'm bringing two, three preliminary concept options illustrating how Thomas Paine might be expanded and renovated to address the needs and issues we previously discussed, including the conversion of Thomas Paine into a three-strand K5. And I think all of you have received the materials that we're gonna go over tonight already, so that's a good thing. So, as we look at these options, and the floor plan is on top and the site plan is on the bottom, I want you to note in terms of the floor plans, the blue color represents new construction or additions to the existing building. The red indicates existing building where major renovation might take place. The green indicates the existing building where moderate renovation might take place. And the yellow, of course, is representative of the corridors that connect all the rooms together on the building. And I would make a note that, for your understanding, if you see a yellow corridor in a, in a blue zone, it's new construction. And if you see the yellow corridor in the existing building, it's moderate renovation would probably apply in terms of the scope of work. Below the floor plans, you'll see that those floor plans have been placed on the sites. And the orange color is representative of any significant drive or parking changes. And there are other notes and graphic symbols that describe other site development work. So, the goal for tonight, I think, is to discuss these options in more detail and try to develop consensus, group consensus, on one of these schemes that we feel might be best suited for further development to sort of put, draw a close to the concept planning phase and serve as the basis for the rest of the project when we actually get into the next phase of work, which would start with schematic design. So we'll look at each option in a little bit more detail. I will cede the discussion with some pros and cons. And I would encourage anybody and everybody to jump in at any time with comments along the way. I know as you probably saw in the materials provided, we did a cursory total project budget for each one of these schemes, and that was just done for the purpose of providing further sort of selection criteria for a preferred scheme. And before we get onto the schemes, it's probable, it's probably valuable to maybe remind ourselves of the existing conditions and issues of the building and site that are driving our decision to pursue this project. Talk about the existing building first. As you all, I think, are aware, there is no central air conditioning there. And the boilers, boiler heat currently, and the boilers are in such condition and the distribution throughout the building leads to very spotty, or very poor heating. It's either too hot or too cold and doesn't often, it's not often right, according to the feedback that I've gotten. The windows, I would say for most of the windows require replacement. And obviously, and this is the initiative that we've pursued on all of the other elementary expansion renovations, we wanna have a, an appropriate and dedicated gymnasium at Thomas Paine, cafeteria, and the new fine arts classrooms. I would also note, and these are highlights, by the way, this is just trying to get us in the mood for discussion. There's a, there's a tremendous lack of space at the main office, inappropriate circulation, and the teachers' quarters, that is, the lounge, the workroom, also lack space. There's a general lack of meeting space throughout the building, as well as storage space. And I guess, over the years, as the educational programming at the school has changed, been expanded, each year, assignments are made for the use of the classrooms and other spaces in the building. At this point in time, there are very poor adjacency relationships in the school with respect to related spaces, so that would be a goal, is to try to clean that up. And then there's the general age and obsolescence of the overall facility. The original building is 1967, the addition is 1972. So when we talk about age and obsolescence, it goes everywhere. It includes everything from mechanical equipment, electrical gear, to the cosmetic aspects of the building, finishes, floor, wall, and ceiling finishes. With respect to the site, we've talked about the student drop-off and pickup traffic congestion at the north end, which is up. And we think that a lot of that is caused by user error, although there may be some physical things we can do to correct it. The service drive that wraps around the north and the east side of the existing building is really causing conflicts with the kids, because they have to move from the building to the playgrounds, which are, which that service drive bisects. One of the biggest complaints is the fact that the parking, the bulk of the parking is remote from the main entry. There are some paving areas, both on the drives and the walks, that need to be fixed up. There's a need for additional bike parking. And there are some improvements that have been discussed regarding the playgrounds, both in terms of the surface and the equipment. And I'm thinking it hasn't been calculated or engineered yet, but we will probably net out more impervious area on this project than we had previously, which will trigger the need for storm detention on the site. So with that, I'll move into the options. Any, any questions on, on the existing conditions on the building or the site at this point? I think we've been over it pretty well before. So this is, this is concept option one for the building. And this may look familiar to some of you on the board, maybe the, the older members of the board. This was a scheme that was sort of introduced many years ago, where the new expansion extends to the east, which is up, north is to the left in this. So, at our last meeting, we determined that we have about 66,227 gross square foot target for the new facility, excuse me. We had 66,026 gross square feet as a target for the, the new building. And this, this scheme delivers 66,227 gross square feet. So it's, it's in the ballpark of the program. It's rational. This particular scheme delivers 22,647 square feet of new construction, about 6,000 square feet of major renovation, and the balance is moderate renovation in the existing building. And I'll, I'm gonna just kind of walk through the scheme. I'm not gonna go through every space in detail, but we can certainly ask questions if those come up. But basically, the, the front entry, existing front entry will remain the main entry to the school. So you would come in, and we've managed to preserve the primary wing to the north, as it is, for the most part today. Probably did a better job of consolidating the grade levels here. Talking about the grade levels, the intermediate grade levels, here's third grade in the south wing of the original building. Fourth grade is positioned in the addition. And fifth grade is part of the new expansion. So not, not as well consolidated on that grade levels. As you come in, we have taken approximately two classrooms worth of space to recreate a proper office and reception area, principal area, associate principal, etc. The nurses also included in that space. Next to that, to the south, we've taken a classroom space, classrooms worth of space, and created new teachers' quarters. And then, to the further south of that, another two classrooms has been reshaped into support offices and a meeting area. Offices, offices there include speech and language, the psychologist, a volunteer mentor, I believe, social worker, and some special needs bathrooms. I'm gonna jump up to the addition. The addition encompasses the dedicated gym, the art, music, and dance classrooms, a maker space that is programmed at Thomas Paine is included here, and the fifth grade classrooms. The gym has a stage, and then the existing gymnasium is converted to the multipurpose space cafeteria. In this scheme, there, there is an existing outdoor courtyard that is being used as a sensory garden, and that is retained in this scheme. I should mention, there's been a lot of discussion about whether the sensory garden should be retained in that courtyard, or if it should be relocated to the outside of the school to be able to provide a larger space and, and have it be more accessible to more people. That's a decision that hasn't been made yet, it still needs discussion. What can be said is, right now, this space is not really accessible. And I'm told, as part of our meetings, you can't, it's very well-developed. Somebody has spent a lot of time developing the sensory garden there, but not a lot of people can access it simultaneously. With respect to the option one site, one of the biggest problems has been that service drive. So this is a common theme in all of the schemes. We have relocated a service drive separate, with a separate curb cut access to the east of the main site access point. So the service drive comes in, and we've affiliated a few parking spaces with that service drive, probably custodial, maybe food service, or some other special use. But the main, the main thrust of this new scheme is to take remote parking and get it closer to the main entry. The way this would work, and, and several of the other schemes, is parents would use that new perimeter drive that was put in in 2015. They would come in, they have stacking space for dropping off, students would, would move to the school, parents could turn around and go back the same way. The fact that they would have stacking space on the exit would hopefully mitigate what was a traffic problem in, with the existing scheme. A lot of parents evidently are shortcutting the drop-off procedure. They're just coming into that parking lot here, dropping kids off and pulling back out, so we start to get backup traffic jams, not to mention we have kids crossing in front of bus lanes and sort. So this scheme also requires teachers to come through here, but, teachers and visitors, but they have an angled parking scheme that brings them much closer to the entry. And the width of this paving here, then, would allow the buses, would allow the cars to come and go while buses are staged, unless they have their stop sign out. As well as, it's a one-way, it's a one-way traffic scheme for both the buses and the cars. Analogous to the north side of Yankee Ridge, if you can picture that. The existing staff parking over here stays as is. What to do, and, and if the project can afford this improvement, then the question comes, what do we do with the old paving? The old remote parking paving? And a suggestion would be to restore that to green space. That actually might help offset our impervious calculations, such that our storm detention is less or potentially none required. So that's, any questions on that one? Okay. So here, quickly, just to seed this, the discussion now or later, are some pros and cons for option number one. Option number one has less new construction, has less major renovation, and it does a reasonably good job of separating the K2 and 3.5, or primary and intermediate student movements within the school. They all have to access this common corridor, but they're basically in their own spaces. I mentioned maintaining the courtyard, I wanna go back to the scheme before. What I didn't mention was the playgrounds in this site plan. As you can see, we had to add a couple of kindergartens to the north end of the existing building in this scheme, but it doesn't really impact the location of the K2 playground. So the K2 playground would be improved, if you will, but not have to be relocated, which is not the case for the 3.5 playground. This addition would displace where that is today, so it would have to be redeveloped in another location. So back to the, back to the cons for option one. It's not apparent to the casual observer, but when you make this extension to the east in option one, there's a significant grade drop-off to the east. And what would happen is, we would have to build this site up dramatically to make all of the floor elevations of the existing building and the new addition the same. So that's an issue, and it's a cost issue as well. While this looks like in a relatively efficient scheme from a corridor standpoint, you can see that there are long travel distances involved, which means time between classes and, and time to get to classes.
So Riley, at Prairie and at Yankee Ridge, we put slopes in the hall to go down so that the stage and the gymnasium are both accessible. If you put a slope down in the hallway, doesn't that begin to ameliorate a lot of that nine-foot?
Well, yeah, yes, we'd have to have stairs and a ramp somewhere, but the nine feet is a huge elevation variance to overcome, meaning long ramp and lots of stairs. I mean, it's a full, it's a full story. I don't believe Yankee Ridge or King was a full story. We could take advantage of our modest grade changes at those two schools. The other thing, John, when we would leave the school to access the new 3.5 playground, we would have to duplicate that type of accessibility with exterior ramps and/or stairs. Yes, it could be done, but I'm not sure at what cost, or if it's desirable. One thing that is not fixed in this scheme is, there's a dog, a couple of dog legs in the existing corridors at the existing building, which is the source of a lot of complaints regarding the ability to supervise the kids and their movements back and forth. So while we save that money, it would remain a problem. I didn't talk about this in the plan, but the primary sped classrooms are relatively remote from the gen ed classrooms, and that's not a desirable feature. And as I already mentioned, the 3.5 gen ed ends, and, and the 3.5 sped classrooms aren't very well-consolidated in this scheme. And I already mentioned the playground, 3.5 playground needing to be relocated and redeveloped. So here's, here's concept option number two building. Again, 66,410 delivered versus the 66,026 program. So again, we've been able to translate those program of requirements into a reasonably sized facility. New construction 23.8, major renovation 7, 7,240, and the balance, moderate renovation. This scheme attempts to compact things a bit more. So you enter, as we always have, in the main entry. Again, the, the primary wing is well-consolidated, and in this scheme, we're able to get the sped, the related primary sped classrooms in fairly close proximity to the general classrooms. The office redevelopment is the same here, two classrooms worth of space redeveloped. The teacher, teachers' quarters, again, a classroom worth of space redeveloped on the other side of the hall this time. And again, that support office redevelopment space. In this scheme, we have both the third grade level and the fourth grade level consolidated pretty well, including the, the intermediate sped classrooms here, which leaves the addition wing to serve the fifth grade. This is sensory therapy titled lit. And then the expansion, the expansion is two components here. It's obviously a Obviously a larger expansion north to to work out the primary wing. And then an expansion east which huddles uh closer to the existing building, including the gym, stage. Music, dance, art, maker space and other support spaces, new bathrooms, et cetera. And again, existing gym converts to multipurpose. Concept option two site, a little variation on a theme, service drive still. This time. We have a one way exclusive bus lane. Separated by a median. And then teacher visitor parking comes straight in and angle parks sort of facing the school. And would exit that way. Parents same function, pull in, stack, drop off and go out. You can see that this. Parking arrangement has is a little wider because of the parking being being on this side and the driveline being there. And it. It, for lack of better words, nibbles at the tree grove. That exists out there. Uh, I would remind everybody that. The twenty fifteen site improvements, the a directive came down at that point in time. Where the tree grove didn't want to be touched. None of us can remember exactly why, but it might have been a memorial tree or. Or just uh, you know, not wanting to. Not wanting to cut out down any trees in the grove, but. This scheme actually takes a little bit out, but again, the idea would be. Uh, to take that remote parking out and restore it to green, which would give us an opportunity to put. Landscaping back and in a good spot, I think. So in this scheme. The north addition is such that. The K two playground probably does need to be. Redeveloped because we've, we've eaten into the. The real estate of that playground enough where we'll have to redo that playground. With the, with this addition being um maybe not extending as far east. It appears that the three five playground. Probably needs to be redeveloped or we might, uh, we might script by by just improving it. It's hard to tell yet the great, we'd have to study the grades a little bit further. In all cases, I didn't mention this in the previous site plan, but in all cases, I'm, I have a storm detention note up here. With an arrow pointing basically southeast, knowing, I think everybody is familiar with this, but this site falls. Down off to the southeast and it has its lowest. Uh, elevations to the southeast, so that would probably be where any storm detention if needed would would uh go.
And there's a surface stream down there as well, I believe.
Is there?
Uh, yes, it goes underneath uh Stone Creek Boulevard.
Gotcha.
I have a question about the staff and visitor parking.
Yes.
The direction that you have them going, uh, why did you not, uh, as you do in number three? Have them going um right to left. Back north. Because at this point, if they come in, uh, and there's parents that are using the Serpentine Road. To get back out, you've got people turning left into the staff and visitor parking space right in front of the traffic that is moving. Uh, to the north to get to uh Florida. Not not move your cursor right there at that end. You've got people that are coming in off of Florida. They would have to turn left across traffic that's coming back. From dropping kids off and um. The way your cursor went is the way the parents exit and you've got um people turning left. So just a.
Yeah, there's a.
Observation.
Yeah, there, there's a conflict here is what you're seeing, John.
Yes, with uh.
Yeah.
Three different means of getting there, bus, staff parking and and um and they're turning left in front of ongoing traffic.
Yep.
Order to get into the parking area.
That, that's absolutely correct. Um, I'm not sure, you know, how the timing would work out on that and if it would be a severe problem, but. As I said, this is a variation on a scheme and what this variation on this scheme does, and I didn't mention it yet, is it would actually provide. The ability to expand this parking in the future. By getting further into the tree grove. So if there were ever a need to expand parking, this is probably a. A more advantageous scheme for doing that. But that's a good point, John.
Well, when we look at three, you'll be able to see.
Yep.
I think the same capacity is there with a little bit better traffic flow.
I agree. Um, so option two pros and cons for talking purposes. Some more compact layout for sure. Um, minimizes the travel distances uh for most parties. Um, does a good job of uh separating the primary from the intermediate student movements while in school. Both primary and intermediate classrooms have good proximity to one another. Um, the sped, the sped classrooms are well integrated. With both parties and again, it maintains the courtyard. I, I say maintain the courtyard as a pro. Uh, at this point, until a decision is made one way or another as to its use. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the courtyard in terms of uh being able to uh. Move the sensory garden outside the perimeter of the existing building and then repurpose. The existing courtyard or maybe even enclose it as interior space, but we have yet to really find. A use for it or be able to. Um, reduce the capa- the the expansion area by using it. It's a fairly narrow dimension space.
Let me ask if if the courtyard were enclosed, could you not put the. It typing small, but I think it's the tech space and um. Mechanical and whatever that's relocated in order to straighten out the hallway, the stuff that's adjacent to the library. The red, the red stuff that's adjacent to the library, because the plan doesn't allow for any expansion of the library. And I believe this is one of our smallest um elementary school libraries.
Yeah. Uh, that's a, that's a potential, John. Uh, neglected to explain before that that existing stage that. Serves the existing gym is programmed to be added to the library space. And would undergo major renovation to make those floor elevations equal. So. The library is getting expanded, but you're right, it would be landlocked to future expansion.
Well, and since even with the addition of a stage, I believe it may stay. To be a pretty small library compared to our other elementary schools.
Well, yes, the answer to your question is yes, that could be enclosed and yes, it might serve as appropriate space for mechanical equipment. Kind of depending on what system alternatives we look at and end up with. Although it does, it does bring a cost uh component along with it.
I understand. My man, my concern is not to use up the courtyard space, but rather uh some concern about the size of the library.
Yep, understand. So um. The cons for option two. It has somewhat more new construction, somewhat more major renovation. And I'm saying the K two and three five playgrounds require total redevelopment, although I'm not so sure about three five yet. This note where it says repurposes old boiler room, uh, that's how the circulation uh. Problem is solved in this scheme. The old boiler room uh goes away and probably will go away. Depending again on what kind of uh HVAC system we apply to the new facility. Um, and as I said, the parking uh has a minor impact on the tree growth. Option three building, this was an attempt to take the. New gym dedicated fine arts classrooms and move them to the south. Of the existing building. Such that we could have a entrance. Kind of a separate entrance to that area. Uh, on the west, maybe somewhat closer to the bulk of the parking, if the parking changed. This delivered, this scheme uh has a bigger footprint than the others. Versus the sixty six oh twenty six program. Uh, new construction twenty four six eighty seven, major renovation seventy eight eighty, the balance moderate renovation. A lot of the same. Approaches, main entry. A four classroom addition to the north to finish out the primary wing, if you will. All of the sped classrooms in there. And by the way, I, I didn't mention this in previous schemes. The intention would be to, on those existing large bathrooms that you may or may not be familiar with. It would be the intention to dedicate uh one of those to the primary, to K two. Restrooms and the other uh to three five. Cross traffic in, you know, intermediate and primary student cross traffic is an issue. That people would like solved. Here. Um, so that was an aside, uh, same approach on the office, the teachers. And the support offices. Uh, in this case, we have a third grade here. We have uh. Fourth grade here. And fifth grade here. We solve the circulation conundrum a little bit differently here and we did use the courtyard here to finish up. The program which mandates sensory garden goes elsewhere. And then down here again, we have the gymnasium stage, appropriate storage, dance, music, art. And so on. Going to move on unless somebody has questions. So uh, here's the site plan that John was referring to. Dedicated bus lane with a median separating the new visitor staff parking. And both parents and staff would come in. Staff would drop or parents would drop off, go back out, staff would park. Angle parking and exit. Staff parking remains. Uh, I think the K two playground in this scheme could probably manage to stay, but be improved. And the three five in this scheme can stay and be improved and storm tension, stormed attention again to the southeast. Pros and cons. Cons list is a little longer on this one, we think. Pros, however, K two and the three five classrooms. Have good proximity. Well, I would. Think I would argue with my own pro there. I believe the K, I think the primary has good classroom proximity. Three five, not so much. I don't know. Must not have reviewed this carefully enough. Again, primary has good integration for their sped classrooms. Uh, we're saying a pro potentially is this west entrance to the gym. If you can see, it would be here and parking. So I'm not sure how strong that is, but then the cons. This absolutely has the most new construction associated with it, has the most major renovation. It actually involves four separate additions to the existing building, which is. Not headed in the right direction, I don't think in terms of. You know, contractor mobilization and costs. We do have a partial infill of the courtyard here, which pushes. Sensory garden out. The K two and the three five student movements, they're sharing a lot of the same corridor spaces. They're moving past one in the, as an example, the primary students are going to move past the third grade. The office in the third grade and or the fifth grade to get to the gym. Poor integration of the sped classrooms with the three five classroom, basically because they're, they're all spread out. The primary wing is quite remote from the gym and the fine arts classrooms. And again, there's a minor impact on the tree grove. And I would say another con would be, it would be hard to expand this parking scheme. And I know that was uh, that was pretty much of an overview on all of them. We can talk about any of them. Here is the estimated total project budget for each of the three schemes. And this, I think you can consider this twenty twenty one dollars right now. But I, I, I want to qualify these estimates because they're very cursory, they're done on a formulaic basis. And they're really just for the purposes of comparing the schemes rather than setting the project budget, which. I don't think we can really do until the end of schematic design. Um, I put the actual cost of Yankee Ridge down there. Uh, this is that our actual spending on Yankee Ridge was about eleven and a half million. So you can see, for example, scheme two is uh about another million. I would note that Yankee Ridge costs were at, were probably. Twenty sixteen costs, so. Uh, you know, half of the differential is probably. Cost escalation, but then, you know, the rest of it is probably caused by scope. Uh, an easy one to understand is. Well, no, it's not because I, I included the window replacement in the eleven five. So yeah, there's a. Let's say there's a half a million dollars difference between Yankee Ridge in twenty sixteen and and option two in. Twenty twenty one. Uh, or a million. Uh, so half of it is probably escalation and half of it is increased scope.
And and yet we're adding far fewer classrooms than we added at Yankee Ridge. Well, not far few, I guess, six, not counting the arts classrooms because we had those everywhere. Well, we're adding six classrooms and I thought we added eight. Um, just on the, to the east at Yankee Ridge.
That's correct, John. We added eight at Yankee Ridge. And then that actually plays into one of my concerns here overall for all three. Is that with, with, I'm, I'm thankful that we've got a, a three strand school design here, but. With our contract limits uh in kindergarten and first grade, oftentimes we need four classrooms for those two grades. This makes me wonder that we need, might need another two classrooms.
And and I should assume that they're probably about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per classroom.
Well, that's what we've said before. That's probably a good um level for talking. I believe uh during the course of the programming, I asked about the fourth kindergarten. And I don't remember the exact answer, but I, I. For some reason, I thought there was a rationale for not having four kindergartens here. I don't know if Jennifer Kim can help me with that at all.
I think we were just saying, we were just trying to stay with the three strand.
I mean, that, the problem is the twenty-two, twenty-two student classroom limit in kindergarten and a thirty student classroom limit in third grade. It's problematic. Also, I noticed there wasn't like an after-school room here like there is in Yankee Ridge. Is there no after-school program at Thomas Paine?
We did talk about that, that we would have to, we noted that after the fact. They have not had after-school because the numbers have been small, so that the kids at Thomas Paine have been going to Wiley. But this year with our, you know, possible plans for the fall, we were hoping we'd be able to have a room come back to Thomas Paine. So we've met with the new principal about that. That there are spaces that could be, after-school could use after-school.
And so I ask this question from admittedly pure ignorance, which I have to apologize for. But is this a significant expansion of our sped program at Thomas Paine? Because I just don't remember that many classrooms being devoted to sped.
This is the current program, so we didn't add anything.
Okay.
This is what they currently have.
So they currently use five, six classrooms for sped? Plus the
Five, actually.
Five.
Three, three for primary, two for intermediate.
Okay. And then they, and then you've got various other labs, of course.
The other rooms, John, are the sped resource rooms. That the ones in that intermediate hallway.
Okay. I, I told you, I had complete ignorance here. I'm usually on top of this, but on this particular aspect, I'm operating from a vacuum of knowledge.
Well, and to Paul's point, what, what, what are our other?
Riley, I had a question for you.
Anne, who goes first?
I'll finish, Brendan, then you.
Yeah, Peggy, thanks.
To Paul's point, what are other elementaries doing about the fifth kindergarten space, especially the, our newer elementaries? I mean, the ones that have most recently been renovated, Yankee Ridge and
No one, no one has a fifth kindergarten space. The only space where we have kindergartens, that many kindergartens is Dr. Williams. And, and that's partially because of dual language. So there are some years that they have two English and two DL. There are years where they have three English and two DL. Dr. Williams is basically the only place where we have run into that problem or that need, having that need.
Okay. Because, you know, of course they've got the highest population. Lille, of course, has dual language. Their population's a little lower, but they've been, they've managed to meet classroom limits in kindergarten with the four classroom spaces?
Yes, their English numbers have been low the last couple of years, so they've only needed to have one English K. Or one monolingual K class.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Brenda.
Riley, my concern is which one of these concepts do you think is the safest outside of the building with the traffic flow? And the buses, that was one of our concerns earlier. That's why we did change that a little bit at Thomas Paine. But looking at these three, I, I agreed with what John said. I was sitting here looking at this traffic pattern going, how in the world is this going to happen? So in your opinion, I just didn't know which one you thought would be the safest.
I think I agree with John as well. I think you're looking at the one that seems to work the best. The causes it causes staff to take the same route in to the, to their staff and visitors, the same route into the lot for parking as the parents are using for dropping off and potentially stacking. That's the only issue I really see with this one.
Okay, thank you. And Riley, can't you put that traffic flow pattern onto concept one and two?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, these, these site plans are interchangeable.
Gotcha.
For the most part.
I have a question. Where is Sandy Cooper's walking area or memorial type area? It's to the east of the build. I've never, I haven't been there, so I'm not, I'm not sure where it is. If we're actually seeing it there alongside one of the playgrounds to the east or not?
I, I think this, follow the cursor here, I believe that is describing a portion of that. And so this scheme allows that probably to remain as for this scheme and, and let me let me go up to the top here for a second.
I, I think that's right. And while you're cursing through there, we warned the PTA at the time that they placed that path, that when we did the gym, that it would probably be disturbed.
Yeah, the options two and three probably disturb it the least, Ruth Ann. But option one causes it to have to be reworked.
Okay. Just a little bit of history. When I moved back to town in nineteen ninety-two, the wooded grove was already there and it just has always, there was a name associated to it at one time. I can't remember after all these years, but it's just kind of a little bit of sacred ground, not to mess with it. But if we have to go into some of the green space around it, I'd be okay with that. I have one other concern is that as we possibly might be taking out the courtyard, we are limiting, eliminating on natural light. It would be going into those rooms that are lined on the west side of it.
That's a good point. We, we can do it, but I agree with you. It's depending upon those adjacent uses, it's, it could be a bad idea.
Yeah, if you'd have to reconfigure where all the classrooms are going to be and just use those for like pull-out classrooms or you know, interview spaces or whatever has to happen during the day or whatever, where people aren't going to be in there solidly all day long and not have some natural light. Because definitely, you know, I'm not going to suggest that we put in skylights or anything like that. That's, that's a no.
I, I know there were some spaces on the master high school, middle school campus master plan, we were going to do just that. Have these included spaces with skylights so that you can then borrow if the natural light the adjacent spaces, which would be good. However, in this instance, that space is so narrow. Any activity that happens within that space is going to disturb the classrooms immediately adjacent, in my opinion.
So follow along to that. I mean, you could relocate some of the teacher space to the south, the south part, where you've taken two classrooms and those could go into the space that's currently marked for sped three, four. I think it's what it is. The green space. And then use half the courtyard only like you do in plan three. But my, my concern, there's probably a solution to finding that space. My, my, I, my concern is going to remain the size of the library. And, and to me, that should take precedence over trying to keep the sensory garden. Because sensory garden can be relocated with some work, I admit. And the parents that have put in the time and effort to make that sensory garden have done a wonderful job creating that space. And so I don't want to lightly talk about doing away with that courtyard. But I'm just concerned about the library space. And perhaps some real accurate comparisons of library sizes between the school, two schools, between the other elementary schools and this school would help to either allay my fears that we, in fact, when we do incorporate the stage, we can redesign how the library space operates. Because the library does currently use that stage for book storage and things like that. They don't, it's, it's not sitting there unused.
Just a slight correction to that. They no longer use the stage. It's, it's completely used by PE now.
That's happened since my kids went to school there, so I apologize. But well, that makes the library even more cramped. Then I think
I think that's a good comment, John. We can look at, we can look at and do a comparison with the other elementary school libraries. And maybe there's a different, maybe there's another way to skin that cat as opposed to having to use the courtyard. So we'll, we'll explore all the alternatives on that.
And then the other thing about, you know, the need to advance to expand parking in the future, should some school board in the future feel that it's necessary, you can go to the south off the Serpentine into that open area where the sidewalk currently goes over to the apartment complex.
Yeah, that, I probably agree with that, although it really needs to be studied because there's topography issues going in that direction as well.
Understood. We live in Illinois, you know, we get excited about a two-foot difference. If we lived in Pennsylvania, we'd be thrilled to only have a two or three-foot difference.
Can I get back to Paul's comments again? Where, where did we land on the classroom numbers?
Yeah, that I think I'd like to see two more classrooms if possible, but I understand there's budget reasons and, and space concerns and that's something that's going to be decided probably pretty quick.
Yeah, and I think that's what we talked about, Riley, is that we wanted to at least have a model where we could have add alternates, that we could add classroom space if we needed to. But right now, cost-wise, we thought bringing you a three-strand would be about what we could afford.
So what classrooms would we be adding?
Probably K-one.
Two K, two K-ones?
Oh, one of the
AK and A-one.
Oh, gotcha.
The only issue with that, Paul, is whenever we do that, then we, we end up having these massive second grades because then we've got to take four K, four ones and put them in the three twos. But like you said, the class adjustment at two-three is higher. So that, that's just something that we, you know, we've had to work with. And sometimes we end up having to have combination one-twos or two-threes to, to meet that need in years where we have a lot of second graders, but it, it definitely something to think about. It, it did come up, you know, during discussion.
And part of it is I'm looking ahead to the Wiley renovation and the need for for space to absorb the students as they're displaced during renovations of that building.
Yes.
Okay, I understand that. So I didn't mention when we were looking at the cost, this building, option number two building, there was a, there was a pretty strong preference by the administration and the staff for the option two for the building. I guess I'd like to hear from the board too, if you agree with that or you, you have a different preference. And then I, I agree with John and I think maybe everybody else agrees that option three on the site is preferred.
Can I make two comments, Riley, before they, everyone weighs in? One about the, the garden. So in the midst of the programming and, and we heard from the PTA and we thought that they were going to be very attached to keeping the sensory garden where it was. But there was a lot of interest in them working with us to have the garden outside the middle of the courtyard. There's access issues, there are watering issues. So I think they would be amenable to it being outside the building. And, you know, we heard from the PTA president on that. And then the Ruth Ann, to your comment about the Sandy Cooper Memorial Walkway. We did discuss that, you know, depending on what option we chose, we would re, re redevelop that space because that was something that the PTA was promised. You know, even when they put it back there, they were told that we would still make sure that it would stay there and be re, repurposed in, in some way, despite whatever concept we go with, but.
Good, good.
One more question for Riley as we get into the, the site option preference. Is there, are there any advantages to the three options with regards to staging the work in terms of having workers on site during the school year?
Well, there would be no advantage to option three for staging the work. There would be multiple stages. I think the the ability to maybe have the service drive arrive early to the site might, might allow contractor access and storage and mobilization effectively such that we would just continue our normal operations from the front of the building during construction. Not to mention that at least in option two, the two additions are immediately adjacent to that service drive. So I guess option one would be similar. But I think this, the new service drive could help contractors staging and mobilization and keep it away from continuing school.
As long as you don't build a final one and let it get beat up with all those heavy trucks coming in and out.
Yeah. Well, it could be temporary until late.
Yeah.
I have another concern before we go on. I've, I've got to bring it up and that's a safety issue. I do not like the dog leg corridors, only for the sake of a possible intruder alert. Nice straight corridors where you can see from one end of the building to the other to see who is in motion. Is what I would prefer. So I'm thinking on the safety side.
Yeah.
Crossed, of course, it's never going to happen. Hopefully, anywhere in the world, it'll never, ever happen again.
Yeah, option two pretty decent in that regard, with the exception of this area in here. Teachers didn't have, didn't take exception to that. And of course, these cost us and it's provide a full building technology upgrade too, so we could, we could certainly care more if we had to, but we will try certainly to take that out.
I don't think no, go ahead, please, Paul.
My preference is for option two, I think, at this point. With the proviso that we, we changed the, the, the parking layout.
To option three?
Oh, yeah, darn, or just fix it so that they're slanted the other way.
Before we take more votes, so we haven't heard anything from Tori. Tori, did you have any questions? Don't, not seeing her, okay. I had a couple, unless Tori pipes up, I'll, I'll be quiet. I remember taking a tour a while back and there were some faculty concerns about oh, no, Tori, I, I don't think we can hear you. Is, is she muted, Jennifer?
She is not showing up as muted for me.
Okay. Oh, she says no questions. Okay, thanks, Tori. So I, I had heard from some faculty about plumbing and sanitation issues. Just to not be too blunt about it, but smell was a big issue with the restrooms. And I don't, I don't know where, I'm assuming that there would be a faculty bathroom or does And I don't, I don't know where, I'm assuming that there would be a faculty bathroom, or does the faculty just share bathrooms with the students? That's one thing. And, and I'm also assuming, I'm just trying to look at the really tiny print, that the faculty lounges are all accommodated in the red spots for all three plans, right? Would that be working with, with separate bathrooms for them?
Yes. In fact, we, as part of the programming, it was acknowledged that there weren't enough staff bathrooms in the facility. And we increased the number of those, as well as they have their staff, gender-neutral staff toilet within the teacher's lounge.
Okay, and so would, sorry.
So the staff is going to be all taken care of in terms of restrooming. As far as the large bathrooms, yes, they, they have been a source of much discussion in terms of their need for renovation. Let's just say that. That's, that will be part of the scope of the project.
Okay.
Ventilation.
Good, because I, when Ruth Ann mentioned the sensory garden, I, I, it was been a while. I just wondered if that was a contributing factor to the poor ventilation, but it doesn't at this point, since that's going to be addressed. My only other question was if they, we did anything with option three, is there a very steep, I can't remember if there's a really steep grade on the south side of the building. If, if we're going to go with three and the gymnasium and everything was going to be built there, is that one of those issues where you're going to have to build another whole story of elevation to prop it all up?
There is some grade issues there, not quite as severe as option one, but yes, there would, there would be fall off.
Okay.
And of course, we checked, we checked the setbacks from Lowman Park, and it, it just fits if, if we wanted to pursue it, but it does. Better scheme.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
I had a question, Riley, it's Brenda. Would the faculty bathroom be handicap accessible?
Yes.
Okay. Also, I was curious about why in option two, that the old boiler room, that would be a con. Can you talk a little bit about that compared to the other options?
The old, the old, in option two, which is on the screen now, the old boiler room goes away to allow this cleanup on the corridor.
Okay.
And the boiler room probably can go away because of the, the new HVAC system that the possibility that the new HVAC system elected for this facility will not be boiler-driven. So we don't have to have that dedicated boiler space anymore.
All right, thank you.
That's a longer story, Brenda, but that basically tells you, we can afford to do away with that boiler space in this scheme.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a new question before we move on. What is the current count of parking spaces out in the lot at Florida Avenue right now?
Four more than what you show.
We show, I think, what do we show?
The existing is four more.
Parking spaces in the redo, that's a couple more spaces than you have now, I think. And that's more than Yankee Ridge has by a few. To give you a sense of comparison.
What, what, where my mind is going is on days when there will be an event where parents are coming and going of an evening. Sometimes it happens a couple of times a year. And I can just see the act, like the incoming lane, exiting, exiting lane. One of those sides is going to start stacking up with people, parallel parking along that, so they don't have to go out to the street or over to James Cherry, or even all the way down to Lincolnwood to start, you know, making the hike up to the school.
Yep. Yeah, I think the only, the only answer to that is spend more money and put more parking in. I think Yankee Ridge is kind of lucky in the sense that they have Mumford and Anderson street parking that's relatively close to the school. We don't have that luxury here at Thomas Paine, so we, if we want to provide for the few huge events in the calendar year, we'd have to spend a lot of money on parking. A lot more.
Yeah, well, exactly. That's why I said, only a couple of times, when they all converge. Possibly not this coming school year.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll be all out of this by the following, and we have a brand-new school where everyone's going to be present.
And I don't know, maybe somebody there knows, is there street parking on Florida?
No.
Not in.
There, there is in front of what used to be called, oh, I can't even think what they were called now, the Florida Avenue Apartments off to the west. There is some parking there, but as you start to take the curve, there's bike lanes coming and going out of the neighborhood right there. So the next place is just across the street onto James Cherry in front of the townhouses, or going down to Lincolnwood, Rutledge and Curtis. Or parking is allowed in front of the townhouses to the east, directly to the east of the school property. At least some of the tenants park there, we'll put it that way. Maybe they're not supposed to, but I see parking there sometimes.
I, I guess the other thing that occurs to me as I look at the state plan is with a little education, maybe the big events take advantage of the service drive with some parallel parking, knowing that you can always come up to the turnaround and get back out.
And what they do right now is where those buses are parked, there would be cars during the day parked all along there. That's what they typically do now in this day.
Well, I'll indicate, I prefer number two. I like the idea of keeping the multipurpose room and the gymnasium close together like we have in our other places, so that they function as a unit when you have a community event. You can use both of the large assembly rooms in a COVID time when we can all have larger facilities again. But that's, that is why I prefer, I do prefer moving some of the volunteer psychology meeting room, SW, I'm not sure what SW means. But if you move those to the east side of that corridor, then you don't have a window problem with, with your classrooms, and put classrooms back where those meeting rooms are, which makes it a little easier to use up the courtyard, courtyard space, so you can expand the library. And obviously, I think that we can work with option three. Your, your, your submission says there's 68 current spaces everywhere at that site. And your option two, and I believe option three both call for 64 spaces. So it's a minor drop in spaces, but let's be honest, as, as we're moving forward in time, we have fewer and fewer people using cars to get places. And I think our investment is better put in, in bicycles and, and other forms of transportation.
You're right, I just saw that 68 versus six, but we can correct that for sure. We can get back to what you have.
And, and Jennifer raises a real good point that when you're not doing student drop-off or pickup, all those bus lines are used by, by parents and visitors. So I think there's plenty of parking on, and those buses wouldn't be there for an evening event. So I, I think there's plenty of room for over, quote-unquote, overflow parking.
Okay. John, would you go over one more time for me, your suggestions about moving the support offices to the east side there?
Where you currently have sped three, five, next to the teach, the teach is in red. And then you have sped three, five, and four. If those two classrooms were put on the west front of the school, where there currently are two classrooms, where you have volunteer, volunteers, psychologists, SP, social worker, that's what SW is, and L and meeting space. And if you put those against the, the courtyard, you don't have to worry about windows in those spaces so much because many of those rooms already don't have windows.
You mean retaining the flexibility of reusing the courtyard then?
Yes, because you don't have to worry about natural light into the classroom. Just flipping the classrooms with the, with a portion of the teacher suite.
Right.
That's just an idea. I'm just, just listening to other problems about having natural light into the classrooms, that would solve that. And the more of those interior spaces with lousy windows that do nothing but leak cold air, the better off I think we are.
Hopefully, we'll correct those leaky old windows. Okay, got it.
That's just some windows you don't have to pay that just do nothing but light up a hallway.
Okay, so there's option three, so, okay.
All right, I, I too, this is Peggy, I too support option two. It's just a more logical, compact, functional set of educational spaces. I just, I think it just, it's more sensible. With the caveat that we used the drop-off flow parking shown in option three, which sounds like it's a safer way to go. And I, I, I too would like to see us expand the library unless I'm proven wrong when you give us the actual dimensions of the other libraries. Because my sense has always been the Thomas Paine's library was way small. And, you know, as we move to using libraries for so many more functions, you know, I, I don't think we should shortchange the library during this renovation time. So option two with those caveats.
Got it.
Just, just for the record, I do need to register that we thought this was going to be a seven to eight million dollar project. Now we're talking for, you know, 12 to 13 million after we get done with the comments and after you get done with the results. So we as a board just need to recognize that, you know, COVID has already cut down on our sales tax revenue. This is, this is a little bit more than what we anticipated spending. So it's going to unduly delay any other projects that we would have in the way of capital projects. So just, I need to be on record on that because a lot of people think I'm working hard not to do anything to Wiley, and the opposite, the exact opposite is true.
It's John. Other board members? Do we have votes from other people we haven't heard from?
I like option number two as well. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I switched from laptop to desktop, so I think that's what did it. Um, I also like the option three parent drop-off option. So number two, but with the three parking and drop-off option.
Have we heard from everybody else? I'm trying to think. Did we miss anybody out?
Kind of me. Kind of me.
Go ahead, Ruth Ann.
Well, I already addressed the dogleg thing, which comes up in two, if there was any way to reconfigure that and make some type of a straight line back to that sort of new wing, if we want to call it that. That would, that, that's, that's just my little please type of, type of thing, and I'd be on, I'd be on board with that along with number three's traffic flow pattern.
I think I have to agree with everybody else on, on number two. That looks really good. I, I was leaning towards three, but then I realized, of course, what you guys all pointed out, which was that the gym and the multipurpose room really do need to be close together. And I, I, I'm fine with doing whatever needs to be done to the sensory garden to maintain light, but also if, you know, it's better placed outside and that space could be closed up, used for something else, that's good with me. But I'm glad that everybody pointed out the parking situation. I think three's parking is better. So that, I'm, I'm in favor with everybody else. Two for the building, three for the parking. Any other comments or votes or questions?
No, we're just discussing tonight. We're not voting on a plan, are we?
No, we're not voting, but just, you know, our own, our own preferences, whatever.
Straw poll.
Straw poll is, but if there are any other questions that anybody can think of for Riley, please speak up.
Just the other aspect of my concern about the expanded budget is it also could end up delaying this project a little bit while we search to come up with enough cash to make this project work. And/or we may need to somehow or another phase this, which I hate to bring that up. You know, the more that we can do this with cash on hand as opposed to borrowing money, the farther our money goes, especially in these low-interest days. So that's, I'm sorry, in the low-interest days, we're better off to borrow as opposed to wait till the interest rates go up. But I'm just concerned about the overall scope here and how it's grown so much over where we were twelve months ago and our ability to, to digest this. I guess we turn that over to Carol Baker.
How much was the Yankee Ridge expansion?
11.5.
Okay, thank you.
Could you please remind me, somebody, Riley, when the breaking ground would start on this presumably?
Spring of 2021.
Spring of 21.
Yes.
Well, I was kind of wondering if, I don't want anything to extend with COVID. I mean, I, COVID itself, I want to end. I was just thinking like, if we were planning this sooner, the fact that, you know, there may not be as many people in a building, would that help us with re configuring where the classrooms are while it's under construction, but forget it, that doesn't really come into play here. I hope that we're all done and dusted with the whole COVID thing by springtime. Well, fingers crossed.
That's for sure. Okay, well, if, if there aren't any more comments, I would just, to close, I would say what, what our intention will, I think the next time we get back together is the middle of August or thereabouts. And what we would intend to do is to take building option two and site option three and try to optimize it and reflect the comments that we've heard today. And maybe even sharpen up the estimate a little bit and come back with a final concept, plan, report. And then we'll decide whether we're moving forward on the project or not.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Riley.
You, Ann, and everybody.
Yeah, great work.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Riley.
Thank you. Hi, Lori. All right, see y'all.
Thanks.
Riley.
Thanks, Riley.
Okay, well, we don't have anything else scheduled on the agenda. Jennifer, did you have anything to add tonight before we adjourn?
No.
I'm moving adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
I can't.
In seconded, do I have to do a roll call for this too? All right, roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Blasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher says yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Everybody.